Ladies and gentlemen, it's according to my, according to my phone, it's 7:00 PM. One quick announcement before we get started is that in Mayor Bane's absence, I will be acting mayor tonight. So with that, we'll call a meeting into order, please. And first thing, our agenda is roll call. Karen, can you help us with that?
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Valento? And Mayor Bane?
Okay, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Lees, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One quick note before we approve our agenda. There was one item that has been pulled off of our agenda, and that's item number 7B, and it was the Forest Lake Tobacco, LLC Tobacco License Application. And so if someone cares to make a motion according to that change?
Someone would.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is our open forum, and this gives the opportunity for citizens to talk about any concerns they may have. And nobody? Okay. Is anybody in the audience want to? I know you guys are all. Okay, then we will close the open forum portion. Next item on the agenda is the consent, agenda considerations, and we have, right now, it's number 6A through I. And anybody care to approve or make a motion to approve, or anything need to be pulled?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6I.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the regular agenda. Item 7A is Resolution 11-14-2201, donation of $200 from Harold and Teresa Berg for the fire department. Al, are you going to help us with that, please?
Mayor, members of the council, the Forest Lake Fire Department would like to thank Harold and Teresa Berg with gratitude for their donation of $200 to the Forest Lake Fire Department. The money that they donated will be used for fire prevention materials.
Very generous donation. We really appreciate it. I don't think it takes a whole lot of discussion, so anybody care to make a motion to that?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number 11-14-22-01, accepting a $200 donation with gratitude.
I'll second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So now we're going to be on to, we're going to skip 7B, and we're on to 7C. We're having a public hearing this evening for Resolution 1114-22-02, ordering certification of delinquent utility accounts. And Kevin, are you going to walk us through that, sir?
Yes, I am. Mayor and council, before you, is a Resolution 11-14-22-02 for certification of delinquent utility bills. This is an annual process where come towards year end, any utility bills that are unpaid of residents and citizens get notified of any past due bills and letters get mailed out stating to them what the amount owed is, the amount that is being added on as fees, as outlined in the memo, and if not paid by November 30th, will be certified to taxes. So this is an opportunity for any residents to come in and state their case to the council if they have any questions or concerns. And also part of that process is to have council approve this resolution authorizing that these charges are going to be certified to taxes if unpaid. This is just like with the property tax levy, this is a current amount that's out there. If residents come in and pay by November 30th, that amount will be less than taken off their certified tax rolls. So with that, we're asking the council approve Resolution 1114-22-02, ordering the certification of unpaid utility bills.
Have any of them changed since this was printed? I mean, are you getting any response at all, or?
We update our list every day based on who's paying. We try to keep that up to date because we need to have this list available to, for the public to inspect. We have a printed copy at our front desk for citizens to come in and look at. We also do have received some payments thus far. As the bills are hitting, the third quarter bills went out coincidentally with these letters. So we have been getting questions as I see my balance due. I have this letter and explain to the residents if they pay that amount due on their bill, then I'll take care of the letter, and therefore will not be sent to taxes. So, and if they pay, if they do pay by November 30th, that $10 fee and that 8% fee is not included in that payment.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, find out where that starts or ends or whatever. So.
I had that question as well. What do we do leading up to this point? Because it seems like sort of the end, the end goal, or the end game, right, before these are applied to taxes? Do we, are we sending out, I mean, other than the bills, are there any kind of notifications leading up to this point in time as to what will happen as of November 30th if bills aren't paid? Or do they just get hit with this letter, this single letter?
They do get this hit with this single letter. When we send out, for example, a first quarter utility bill, all the payments come in by the due date. If by the time the second quarter bills come around and there aren't, and there isn't an applied payment, a penalty is issued onto that account and therefore sent out again with the next quarter's bill. So that homeowner would see a previous balance owed from the previous quarter plus any current charges. So the utility bill does state out the fact what the current charges are and previous charges are. We do have inquiries that come in saying that they paid it, or they had some mix-ups, and we do address those case by case to see if there's issues that we can help them with, if we need, if we can remove penalties or things of that nature. But this is the only notification that they get besides their utility bills.
Is this more than normal?
I believe the amount last year started off somewhere in the half million dollar range, so it is down from what we have been seeing. In my experience with this, it tends to fluctuate quite significantly just based on a number, number of different factors out there, economy and things like that, as far as how people are paying the bill. There are some residents that just choose not to pay their bills, and this gets certified to taxes every year, and that's how they take care of it. That's why it's important, especially this communication, that it's just not that current bill. It's the penalties that are getting added on every quarter as long, as well as the $10 per $100, and the 8% is getting added on to that fee. So it is a benefit for citizens to pay this quarterly as it comes up. We do also work with citizens that are on tighter, you know, really budget. They tend to make maybe, for example, a $20 payment every two weeks. So then they just have a running credit on their accounts. So then instead of getting hit by a big utility account, they just have, they just kind of make that recurring payment weekly or every two weeks. So we do work with residents as much as we can to help them along with making sure that their payments are getting current and staying current and doing what we can.
I'm glad to hear you say that part of it, that we're willing to work with folks to get this thing done, you know?
Yep. It really starts initiating with the residents calling in and having, explaining what's happening and taking it as a case by case basis for what's the best benefit for them and the city.
Yeah. And that was the basis in my question, too. It wasn't, you know, as much about, I mean, handholding, but, you know, some people just procrastinate and, you know, then all of a sudden they receive the letter that they're going to be assessed. So, you know, I was just wondering if we did anything to kind of lead up to that a little bit rather than just the single letter. But I'm glad to hear that as well, for working with folks.
Okay, any other questions about that or comments? This is a public hearing. Karen, do we have any comments for it, or?
I have no one online, and I haven't received any comments.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll close the public hearing portion then. And then we'll continue on with consideration of the resolution. I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 11-14-22-02, ordering certification of delinquent utility accounts.
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7D, Resolution 111422-03, the canvas abstract of votes, November 8th, 2022, municipal general election. And that was under a separate cover. Did anyone, it's kind of a...
You should have packets up on the dais there. And this came in today. I've been waiting for Washington County, so they finally emailed me over the information today. When we canvass votes, we have to do it between November 14th to November 18th. Fortunately, they got it over to us today here for the meeting. What you should have in your packet is, first page is just the title page. Second page is the summary of totals, shows all the votes that came in for all the precincts. Then the following pages will break that down by precinct. And then there's also the write-ins that they send over to us. Along with that packet in there, I think page four, it says, is a signatory page for the council members that are here this evening. And so staff recommends that you approve the abstract of votes cast for the 2022 November 8th elections.
Personally, I don't think there's any argument about how the election went, so if not, we can move forward with this.
I move adoption of Resolution 11-14-22-03, canvas abstract of votes for the November 8th, 2022 municipal general election, city council member race.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number 7E is an echo, is Resolution 1114-22-04, the DNR lease agreement for lift station 25T. And Dan, are you going to walk us through that, or?
No. Acting Mayor, City Council, I'll walk us through that one. As part of the 2022-23 lift station enforcement improvements, lift station 25T is located on property owned by the State of Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and the city currently does not have an easement or other land rights over the property for the lift station. In order for the city to access, improve, and maintain this lift station, the DNR requires the city obtain a land lease. The land lease is a 10 years and requires a payment fee of $840. The lease must be renewed, including payment of the lease fee every 10 years and as long as the lift station remains in operation. The attached resolution approving the land lease agreement with the State of Minnesota for lift station 25T is recommended for adoption. This lift station basically serves the entire north side of Clear Lake and forces it down to, down to Highway 97 area and back around. So it's a pretty critical station.
Sounds like a pretty cheap lease, too.
For as much land they own there. We don't really have an option of relocating it or anything like that. And it's easy access maintenance right now, but.
This is pretty straightforward for me.
Yeah, for sure. Something we have to have.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 11-14-22-04, a resolution approving the land lease agreement, LMIS 010600, with the State of Minnesota for lift station 25T, and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign said lease agreement.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 7F, ordinance number 711, Amendment Code Section 99.17, dash 99, regarding animal waste.
Good evening, Acting Mayor and Council. I got a couple here in a row. Every four years, we do a, we have to renew our MS4 permit. And when we do that, there's some ordinance updates that we have to do to basically meet our bare minimum for the permit. So the first one we have is cleaning up and adding, it's basically adding F in there about not throwing fecal matter in the storm drains, so, from animal waste. So we have to update that to meet our base, our bare minimum for our MS4 permit. The legal team felt it was just easier to repeal and replace the entire ordinance. It was kind of outdated, and there's some stuff that we took out and then added this in. So I don't know why they make us add all the stuff in, just like the next one's a lot of words that you got to add in, but that's just what we need to do.
I know I read through it. It all makes sense, though. I mean, and so I don't have a problem with.
Dave, I do have a question, though. On page 112, item E of the ordinance talks about proper disposal, disposal of the animal waste, and it references bagging and waste receptacles designated for animal waste in a public park or park area. Are we, are we doing anything in our parks about adding waste receptacles and, you know, bags and, and those types of things?
It's on the list. We have a whole bunch on the shelf that we're going to be putting on next year. So there'll be Summit Lakeside, Summerfield, through Fenway and all that. So we just got them in towards the end of the year here. So we just figured we'd wait till spring to add them in. But yep.
Doesn't this, I think this code or this ordinance requires the owner to be carrying something with them, too, as far as bags, right?
Yeah, that would be nice if they were, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Usually doesn't, doesn't happen. If we can give them something to grab it with, that's, that helps out.
And I think there's a correlation between, you know, access to those things and kind of compliance, too, with the ordinance. So I'm glad to hear that we have those in the queue.
Yep.
Why do I entertain a motion when we're the other ladies?
I move approval of ordinance 711 and ordinance repealing and replacing Title 11? What is that? Title?
Nine.
Title nine.
Nine.
Nine. Chapter 99 regarding animal waste.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. 7G, we're here to discuss ordinance number 712, Chapter 151, regarding storm water management. And Dave, you're up for that?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep. This is the same basically as the animal waste, it's just much longer in it, toxicable construction projects and ponding and BMPs and all the way down to proper salt storage. So that was the biggest one that was added in this one that wasn't in there before of properly storing even ourselves or the city, how we store our deicing products. So, once again, legal, just figured it was easier to put in the new language and replace with the old, because there's just so many changes in there. But once again, it's, it's just to meet our, our base minimum, the watershed. Usually the watershed rules are more strict than even what our ordinance, ordinance is, but it's the bare minimum that we have to have to be permitted.
Could you highlight the biggest change that we made on that, Dave? Just so everybody knows.
Like I said, I think the biggest one is adding in that, the salt storage, that wasn't in there before at all. The proper, you have to have it in covered areas and that you have to have it so it can't go into receiving waters and stuff like that. The rest of it's a lot of technical stuff that just updates as watersheds and MS4s updated. They change the rules, and then we just have to change our rules to, to follow that.
Sure.
It just gets stricter and stricter every four years. So in four years from now, we'll be back here again, and the rules will change or they'll get more strict, and we'll have to update. So it's kind of the way of the world now with storm water management. It's getting way more intense.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments, council members?
It was a long one. 26 pages or something like that.
Makes them cover everything in there.
I'll move to approve storm water ordinance 712 and ordinance repealing and replacing Title 15, Chapter 151, regarding storm water management.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And motion carries, passes. Also, now we have 7H, ordinance number 713, Amendment Code Section 98.05, regarding vehicle limitations on lake adjacent right-of-way. And Abby, you're going to help us with that?
Yeah. At your last meeting in Oct., or at your October workshop, we presented you with a preliminary or a draft ordinance that would allow the city or give the city rules regarding the use of the right-of-ways that are adjacent to the lakes. Some of those are right-of-ways, some of those are lands the city owns in fee title. But as we discussed, there's been a whole lot of unwritten policy, so it's really been hard for us to enforce or even develop programs around these areas. What this ordinance really is designed to do is to establish a mechanism for us to establish policy. Essentially, what it says is if it's signed for vehicle use, you can bring a vehicle there. If it's not signed for vehicle use, you can't. As I've noted in the past, we don't anticipate going through any sort of systematic, programmatic approach or analysis at this time. Really, what this is designed to do is just give us a mechanism to enforce when problems arise, such as parking or launching in those areas that are historically have been undesirable. At that meeting in October, you did ask for us to ensure property owners on either side of those areas wouldn't be responsible for the right-of-way maintenance. That is well-defined in the code. We've even amended it just to ensure that that's really redefined in there. So tonight, for your consideration, is the formal ordinance. And if you're favorable, staff's recommending you move to adopt ordinance number 713, an amendment to City Code 9805 regarding vehicle limitations on lake adjacent right-of-ways.
Thanks, Abby.
Abby, I, I realize that we are, if it's signed, it's explicitly designated, but where signage is not in place, access, motorized access will not be permitted. That feels confusing to me. Are we, is there, is there a communication plan around this moving forward, particularly if we are going to be stepping up monitoring and enforcement?
I don't know that we're going to be stepping up monitoring and enforcement.
Okay.
We don't have any tools in place to enforce, and we are not necessarily adding additional resources to monitoring. I think in those circumstances, when a problem does arise, that is, I think, our point of public education, of going out and being able to work with the, you know, somebody parked in that area or somebody that is launching in that area, and do that public education component at that time. I know that both of the watershed districts and the lake association have indicated they'd love to partner on signage opportunities. There are a number of these, I think several dozen of them. And so I think signing each one of them is a pretty big task. Right now, we hadn't been looking at any sort of universal signage program like that.
That was going to be my question. Thank you. Thank you, council member.
Yeah. I just, you know, I think if, you know, generally, if residents understand the rules, they're more likely to comply. And I think the lack of, the lack of signage, you know, it could be just a simple no motorized vehicles allowed or something like that.
Well, the intention of the ordinance was to not have to sign every single one of these. You know, it really was, if we're going to have to sign each one, then we have to do a systematic review of whether or not motorized vehicles are allowed and work with the watershed districts and the lake association to have those conversations. Right now, we're not going to be changing any of those public lake access points.
Sounds like a work in progress to me.
Those public lake access points are already signed. Those are the areas in which we would allow for the launching to occur. We certainly can put it on a, on a thing to keep in, in mind as we move forward, but it is a low priority, at least in the community development department. Certainly something that we'll work with Public Works and police as enforcement issues arise to see if, if we need to do better public education outreach opportunities.
Acting Mayor Husnick, I move adoption of ordinance number 713, an amendment to City Code Section 98.05 regarding vehicle limitations on lake adjacent right-of-way.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number 7I, the Cable Commission to 2023 budget. Paul, apparently you're up.
Well, one of my favorite things to do. Hello, council members. Paul Peterson, Lake City TV. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Forest Lake Cable Commission, looking for approval of the 2023 budget. And I sent you a memo that kind of explained any kind of changes that were happening this year. I guess I will, I can go through it if you like, or if you've read it and you just have some questions you'd like to ask me about the budget or what we're doing or anything. I am willing to go either way. Couple of the highlights this year is we put in a brand-new broadcast system. Our old one was failing on a fairly regular basis, and it was about eight years old. And that kind of put us right to the max, slightly over our, our PEG budget for this year, but that system should last us 10 years or so. But that brings a ton of cool possibilities with streaming and apps and everything. So it, it kind of brings us up to date on technology in general. We will have an Apple app, a Roku app, an Amazon app, a Lake City TV app, and anything we do can be video on demand on any device, or we can live stream to any device. It also brings along new options for council meetings and stuff, so we can embed your meetings in webpages that you can also just put a piece of code one time in your site. And every meeting gets its own page, scrolls the agenda, click on it, jumps right to that point of the meeting. So it should be pretty cool going forward. I'm still learning all of it. It's a lot.
Myself, I just, you know, I read through this stuff, and I'm trying to digest all of it, but it's pretty straightforward and.
It's pretty straightforward. We, you know, we came in a little under budget this year. We're going to go in a little over budget next year. They're going to completely cancel each other out, and so we should be fine. You know, obviously, cable subscribers go down a little every year, and, you know, we, we're kind of running on a bare-bones budget as it is. So all we have basically is salaries and rent is kind of what we're living on. And we've even got our, our, what we call filmmakers that help us do stuff down to almost a bare minimum, because we use students for a lot of things. And live streaming, I can go do a four-camera live-stream shoot by myself. So we, we use them for council meetings about only, but I have a brand-new program with students that on Thursday, I give two seminars. One is an animation seminar, which 32 kids are signed up for. And then Thursday night, I have a kind of a club seminar for five different possibilities, and we have reached out to a couple hundred. I've got 30 some posters in the school, so I may get five kids, I may get 500 kids. We will see what happens on Thursday with that.
Well, Paul, my personal observation here is that you're doing a bang-up job, and the thing wouldn't work without you right now.
I have a ball doing it, so. I get to wake up every day and go, cool. What do I get to do today? What do I get to make today? So working with the students is fun. Like right now, we're doing a Most FL project with the middle school, and they, to me, they seem like they're this small, and we're doing little short films for Most FL, and they, they wrote their own scenarios on the bus and in lockers and stuff, and it's just super cool. And like right now, I'm editing, hockey team came in, did promo videos, and they put those out every time they score and stuff. We do green screen stuff. I have the girls' basketball team coming in Friday, kind of do the same thing. We go on their Jumbotron. They just, they call a lot. They know who to call when they want something, and I help as much as I possibly can. I've gotten better at saying no, because initially I took on too many things, and some things... and some things didn't get done, and people got frustrated with me a little, and I got a little frustrated with myself. And that's even my, my one-year appraisal every year is, Paul's gotta say no more. And I try, but I try to make everybody happy, too. But if we can get the students to take over all this stuff, they will start making it on their own, is the goal here, so.
Sure, thanks, Paul.
I agree, I agree, you do outstanding work. I had one question, in, in the, the salary area of the budget. You had indicated that the commission had made a decision to do a one-time seven-and-a-half percent bump for the access coordinator and administrative assistant. Are you, have you ever done a compworth study with...
We did that this year, and technically, the station can't afford what they should be paying us, so we just kind of went at that. I mean, it was, people were making two to three times what I'm making for comparable stuff at other stations, but I love getting up, doing what I do every day, so I'm, I'm okay with that trade. I love living here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did it just this year for that reason, and it came in. We were all kind of like, oh, my goodness, so.
Okay, yeah, because I, I certainly support that if you're, if you're that far behind. And I, and I figured, seeing a seven-and-a-half percent, there must have been something behind that.
We're just at the max of what comes in right now. And so unless we come up with a different model of some sort, there just aren't more funds to go around there. So that's where we're at.
Uh, just a question.
You guys wanna double what you're giving me?
We wish we could. Just a question for staff, I mean, Dan, or Patrick, I mean, you guys, how do you, how do you feel about the budget coming up here? Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, the budget's, it's, it is what it is, it's very lean and...
Pretty modest.
Pretty modest, and they only have so much, and we have been thinking about different models.
Our board chair used to be an accountant for a giant import-export firm, and so if you look at the budget, all the red numbers are where she fixed my numbers. There's a lot of red on there. So I have faith in those numbers.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Cable Commission 2023 budget as presented by Paul.
I'll second.
Any other comments?
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Absolutely, my pleasure, thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose I should wait for that part?
7J, single axle and tandem axle plow truck purchase approvals, Public Works Department. Dave, you're up again.
You jinxed today, didn't you?
Acting Mayor and Council, this is becoming a, kind of a growing trend here, trying to ask for, for equipment ahead of time, but this one's really far out. We finally got some bids from cabin chassis vendors, and the earliest we can get slotted is the first quarter of 2024 for a build. So this isn't asking for an extension in the 23 budget, it's the budget that'll be hit in 2024. So, these trucks are actually slated to be purchased this year in 2022, which was funded for, that money got slid to 23, and now, tonight, we're asking to get a, get that approval. The money won't be spent at all in 2023, it'll be all spent in 2024. The positive side is that it's under the, the budget at 622. It's about $26,000 under budget, but both vendors have said that there'll be surcharges. It's approximately about, what I've seen for 22 and 23 are about $5,000 each, so it'll probably be another $10,000, which would still keep us under. And that's not even including trading in our two old trucks, too. So they should get some decent dollars in surplus.
Are you thinking we can stay in budget at least, huh?
Yeah. I would, I would guess both those trucks, it's a '02 and '06, and neither one of them have DEF, so they're gonna, they'll get some decent money, probably $20,000 to $30,000 each. So that should, should help out, but it's, I'd rather just come in January and ask for these, but it's, I, I think if we wait till then, it'll bump us maybe to the second or third quarter, which then, you probably won't see the truck until '25, and then you'll be moving budget dollars three years from now. So it's something I've never seen, and, you know, talking with other cities, it's crazy. Al and Rick are in the same boat, it's just the craziest thing ever.
So what I'm hearing, we're kind of locked in for price here, but there could be some surcharges coming up?
We're locked in, it's a state contract, so we're locked in at that $595. The only thing they can add on is surcharge, it's the percentage of whatever the vendor, like, so it's a MAC truck, so whatever MAC charges, they're, they're stuck, they can't say, okay, we're gonna charge an extra fifty grand, it's a percentage.
Okay.
But in '22, it was like $3,800, and then they're projecting, in '23, it's like almost $5,000, so it'll be roughly another $5,000 somewhere in there. But I think being under $26,000 plus the tradings, we should be well under that budget, it's just...
So, just, just to clarify for me, these are currently wrapped into the 2023 budget, but if they really don't hit the budget until 2024, will you just push the 2023 funds out to 2024 then, at that point in time? Okay.
This one was, like I said, this, this actually is, the 622 was in the 2022 budget to be spent on these trucks, and we couldn't even get prices for cabin chassis until mid-October is when they finally gave prices.
Wow.
So it's, the bigger trucking companies are getting them first, you know, the over-the-road truckers that are ordering forty, fifty of them. So us ordering one and two, or other cities ordering just one or two, we get pushed way back. So that's, they finally gave us a price and a slot.
Well, the main thing, we're still in budget, and we're still, this has all been planned for, and we just gotta push it out a little ways, so it's not so scary that way.
Yeah, and I would guarantee, if we change our minds, somebody will sn- snake those, uh, those things when they're due, so I, I don't think there's any risk that, if we decide against it, that they would not take the trucks back.
Do you need separate motions for these?
I don't believe so, there's just approval to go ahead and sign a purchase agreement with, with the vendors, so it's...
Acting Mayor Husnick, I make a motion to approve the purchase of an MY 2025 MAX single axle plow truck for $289,208.45, and an MY 2025 MAX tandem axle plow truck for $306,689.47.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number 7K, Azinkilo, your boat club contract agreement extension. Abby, I guess you're next.
Yes, thank you. In 2012, the city, buying through its park board, entered into a ten-year lease agreement with your boat club. The agreement specifically calls for business operations in Lakeside Memorial Park for twenty-four boat slips with a gas dock and other watercraft rental equipment. The lease agreement terminated this month, and in discussions with your boat club, they would like to have discussions with the city about future expansion. Additionally, we've recently adopted a new downtown plan that calls for significant lakefront improvements. So when looking at whether or not, or how to extend this lease agreement, both parties agreed it would be probably most appropriate to just keep the status quo for a year, allowing us to have another year option if we need, and give us that time to really determine what are the most appropriate next steps for development along the lakefront in Lakeside Memorial Park. So in front of you tonight is a lease agreement amendment that specifically calls out that one-year extension with the ability of either party to extend for an additional year, and following the existing agreement's three percent per year increase. Acknowledge that it's a low increase, but that is what the existing agreement is, and until at such time as we've understood kind of that long-term nature, what other improvements might be done in there. Renegotiating prices right now seemed a little, just inappropriate. So you should discuss the merits and the favorability to the amendment, but if you're favorable and staff would recommend, you move to approve the first amendment to the lease agreement with your boat club.
Well, for me, it makes sense. I mean, it's a, really a good idea to pause on the longer-term agreement while the EDA and city explore, you know, the, the options down at Lakeside Park, and, you know, what our long-term plan is down there, so.
This makes sense to me.
Yep.
Makes sense.
It does.
Acting Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first amendment to the lease agreement with your boat club.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7L, Community Action Partnership of Ramsey and Washington Counties, Household Water Assistance Program Agreement. Kevin, you're gonna help us tonight, thank you.
Yes, Acting Mayor Husnick and fellow council members, before you, is an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Commerce, who partners with the Community Action Partners of Ramsey and Washington County. What this program is, is piggybacking off the Energy Assistance Program, where based on residents meeting certain eligibility requirements, would get assistance with their energy bills specifically to, for heat and gas utilities. This program was expanded to include utility bills related to water, sewer, and any other utility fees the city's charging for our instant stormwater fees. It's at no cost to the city to be part of this program, and we, the city does nothing to determine eligibility with this program. Residents reach out to Washington County in our case, they get in contact with the Community Action Partners, they go through the, the assistance, they submit the required documentation to them, and they determine if they are eligible for the Department of Commerce to pay their utility bill based on certain requirements, mostly income needs. So what this agreement would be authorizing is that the city would take payments from the Department of Commerce on behalf of the, of residents on the city of Forest Lake to help pay their utility bills. So this agreement would allow, again, the city to receive those payments, is managed, the city does not determine the eligibility requirements, we just need to sign up for, sign this agreement, so the residents in Forest Lake that aren't eligible for this program can receive the assistance. So it's a, it's a win-win for the city, where it's really helping out the residents that are in need for assistance, and the city, in most of these cases, getting the utility bills paid, so that they're not going on the property taxes as we discussed previously.
It kind of goes hand-in-hand with our first discussion.
Correct, so it's really, it's really a win-win program as, as I look at it, for the city and the benefit of the residents for the, of Forest Lake. So will be some timing issues on this, as we do know there are some residents that are on the certification list that we know are already approved, so we want to get this agreement signed and everything set up, so we can make sure that we get this taken care of before that payment deadline.
So does the city, does the city receive full payment for those residents that qualify?
My, yes, my understanding is a full payment. So the residents work with the CAP, as I'll call them, Community Actions and Partners. They submit their bill, they go through their income requirements, and my understanding is, is that it's, it's a full payment of the utility bills. This came about, I believe, Tuesday of last week, so I've been working with the Department of Commerce and Community Action Partners to get more information, as well as some flyers, whatnot, so we can promote this program, let residents just know that there are assistance programs out there that'll help them. So, yes, my understanding is that it will be the full, full payment.
So the applications are done on a regular cycle, def, or every quarterly? How do they do that, I mean?
That's, that's one of the things I'm still working through, for how often they submit their income requirements, if it's something every year, or once they're approved in the program. So for example, right now, they just got their third-quarter bills. With that, they can, they have submitted those bills that include current charges, and in most cases, also unpaid charges from the first and second quarter, as they're unable to make those payments previously. If approved, they are approved, and if this agreement's approved, those payments will be submitted, and will bring their accounts up to paid in full. So those are clarifying questions I need to get from CAP, if how often they need to submit their income documentation, to see if they're still qualified for the program, and how the management of that works. But that'll be something that, once the agreement is signed, or get those details figured out.
Well, CAP is a wonderful organization. I've done some partnership work with them myself, and I think anytime we can tap into those partnerships and identify resources that will help our citizens, it's a win. So this is, this is great, glad to see it.
At least we know where some of our money's going, right? That's the way it goes, so.
Acting Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve entering into the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Commerce to be a part of the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
I'll second, oh, go ahead. I'll second. We have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Pat, do you have anything you want to discuss today? We have discussions next on the agenda?
Nope, nope, nothing to discuss today.
Dan, did you have anything at all, or Abby? Oh, okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to staff updates. And we're gonna go right on down the table, we're gonna start out with Ryan.
Acting Mayor, City Council, just a report. Our public open house, we had with MinDOTs on Tuesday, November 1st, Highway 97 between I-35 and Truck Highway 61. It was very well-attended, a lot of good support for the project. There are some things that some property owners brought up that we'll obviously talk about within the project. That'll be helpful moving forward, but the project overall is gonna see a significant amount of safety improvements and pedestrian facility connections. So it was very exciting moving forward, and we're already re-agaging with MinDOT tomorrow on some of the comments received, to talk through some of that stuff. So that project's still moving forward, and still anticipating the 2025 construction, but just wanted to provide an update on the open house, was well-attended.
Thanks, Ryan, glad to hear that. That's gonna be a big improvement there, so.
Do you have an example of the comments that you received? Or am I gonna put you on the spot?
Let's get it done.
Get it done. All right, the cable guy was here. Okay, David, do you have anything for us tonight?
As we all know, it's, it's snow today, so just a reminder for people to slow down. It's just because you took it at fifty-five yesterday and slammed on the brakes ten feet before the stop sign. You probably can't do that anymore for a few more months, so.
Is there, are you still open at the compost?
Yep, so we stayed open today, we'll be open Wednesday for sure, and then we'll play it by, it's supposed to get super cold this weekend, but we just wanted to make sure people, if they had trailer loads or piles still at their house, that they could still drop it off. But for surely open Wednesday, and we may close on the weekend, but maybe open back up then Monday and Wednesday next week. It's supposed to warm up in the thirties, so give people a chance to get rid of what they have before we, we close for the year.
Okay, thanks a lot, Dave.
Yep.
I forgot your name, and I apologize.
It's okay, Amanda.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you, nothing from legal.
Okay.
I have no report.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing additional from finance.
Okay.
No updates, thank you.
Chief Peterson?
Yeah, just a couple of things, piggybacking on what Dave mentioned, what the, the weather and all. We will be enforcing City Code 72.02, that is the no-parking on city streets, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And the reason we do that is to assist Public Works in the plows, so the streets are cleared, and that way, when it does snow, like it has today, they're able to safely plow, and so we appreciate people not parking on the streets. And in the past two weeks, we just put out a bunch of, kind of like flyers and pamphlets, educating vehicles that were parked and violating that ordinance. And so they weren't, they're warning tickets, if you want to call them that, but they're actually flyers, and I think we handed out just under 500 of them in the last two weeks. So it's, what we tried to do is educate before we started enforcing. And with that, today, our officers responded to, I think it was fourteen motor vehicle accidents. A couple of them were pretty serious, and that doesn't include State Patrol, who patrols I-35, 97, Highway 8, and 61. I-35, 97, Highway 8, and 61. And I know they responded to at least that many, if not double that, in Forest Lake area. With that, that's all I have for you, other than if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Chief Peterson? Thanks. Abby, you got anything for us tonight?
Just a couple of quick updates. I was a guest at Rotary a couple weeks ago as a guest with Councilmember Beistrum. Looking forward to finding those ways to engage with the community a little bit more than I've maybe been able to now that I'm kind of settled in six months into the role. The meetings on Wednesdays are a little tricky. We have a pretty heavy development stuff going on Wednesday, so going to look to see how we can maybe still participate in those in the future. Just as an update, the Planning Commission has kind of formalized some recommendations for the MXR 1 district. They'll be holding formal public hearings. Not sure if it'll be in December, but I, but I believe you will see a public hearing ordinance being put forth for January. Apologies, Commissioners Beistrum and Bunson, if you're not here for that, but know that we've made progress on that even, and I think that we've really tried, I've really tried to my time here to kind of get, keep that moving forward and get some resolution so we can gain that comp plan consistency. And then lastly, planning and zoning, current planning is still pretty busy. We were anticipating anywhere between today is an application to the middle deadline for the Planning Commission. We were anticipating up to 10 private applications. We're looking at a lot of just business expansions, site alterations, new Ford dealership coming into the community. So there's a lot of little, some big things, a lot of smaller, what are kind of more traditionally small things that are really consuming the kind of planning zoning world right now. Still working with some of those residential developers that we've been, that I've mentioned to you. Those are slowed quite a bit. It does sound like 2023 is still going to be maybe a little bit slower when it comes to new residential construction. Just wanted to give you guys those updates.
Okay. Any questions for Abby? Thank you very much. Dan, how about you?
Acting Mayor, members of council, I have two airport updates today. First, I just found out that MinDOT is ready to approve the ALP for the airport, which is the airport layout plan. We started that process back, I believe, '20 or '21, so it's been a while. They finally just released it. I know they've had it for over a year, so that's a huge step for the future growth of the Forest Lake Airport. And then I'm also, my fingers crossed and my toes crossed, happy to report that the fuel pump is back up and running. Now that I said that, I probably cursed myself, so.
That's one of the reasons Dan's hair got a little thinner, I think.
Exactly. It's been the bane of my existence for about three, about a month or so, but it is up and running. I just got back, I heard from two support specialists and they said it was up and running.
It worked the other day for me, so.
That's all I have.
Not that means anything, it's just one more person tried it, that's all.
Unless you have questions, I mean, that's all I have.
Any questions for Dan? Karen, do you have anything for us?
No, just wanted to say now that election votes have been canvassed, congratulations to the candidates that won.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions? Okay. Mayor and council updates. Kelly, we'll start with you.
No update, just a congratulations to our incoming council.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep, I echo that congrats as well, and just a reminder to everybody that December 3rd is the hometown holiday and tree lighting ceremony. Have we seen any details on that time-wise, times and...
I think a save the date had already gone out.
Yeah, there's a save the date, but it said more details coming, and I just didn't know if...
I know that, that Jamie has been working on that. I don't know exactly when that'll be published, but I would imagine you'd see that by the end of this week at the latest.
All right, super.
Yeah, I think she was going to be sending me something for the weekly email that goes out on Fridays.
Okay, super.
So if I, and if, and if I don't see anything in the next day or two here, I'll ask her.
Okay, wonderful. I'll just let those folks that have asked know, it's coming.
Okay, well, thank you. I got a couple of updates. I attended the EDA meeting prior to this meeting, that started at 5:30 this evening, and we talked about the commercial improvement incentive program. We try to help out businesses if they try to, you know, fix something up front or whatever, change the facade or whatever. And then also the headwaters concept, now we're thinking about doing what they call ghost plating, where we can show some different scenarios. So if people look at that piece of property, they can decide if they need to hold 120 acres or if they want a 20 or a 30 or whatever, what it would look like and where it would be. And then the, there was some discussion about the downtown boat launch relocation and shoreline study proposal. We didn't quite get there to get, get the funding for that, but that'll, that'll be moving forward. So, and then I did attend the veterans program, a couple of them, of course, Veterans Day. One of them was at the high school, and they did a fantastic job. They don't have a band, they have an orchestra there, and they really do a fantastic job. And with the choir and all that and the veterans, and it was just a really great program. And of course, later on, I went over to the VFW and for their program, they had a guest speaker and all that, and free food, you know, so anyways, that was the end of my, so those are my updates for today, so. With that, our, our number, our, number 11 on our agenda is we need to go into closed session to discuss some labor negotiations. So with that, I would entertain the motion that it takes to do that, and then just...
Acting Mayor, I need to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.03 Subdivision 1B for labor negotiations. The closed session will be held in the Forest Lake Conference Room and will commence immediately. Once the closed session is completed, the city council will reconvene in council chambers and adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Kelly, you have a second?
A second.
All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
We are in closed session.